All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is a special meeting primarily for the purpose of a budget workshop, but we do have some action items to attend to as well. This time, all members of the court are present. This meeting is called to order on July the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five at one thirty P M. Please rise in vocation by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
You're having a call that we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for watching over us and our families. Thank you, Lord, for watching over our first responders, Lord, who are at work in our county. Lord, we do look up the flooding in central Texas, God, west Texas, and Father, we pray that you be with each and every family member who's lost a loved one. Laura, those that are recovering, and what we just pray for, the governor, lieutenant governor, emergency response, God, and all those counties officials, Lord, that are having to undergo and deal with this stressful time. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
There it is. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number three is to consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall to amend the fiscal year twenty-five Roden Bridge two budget to increase the salaries overtime line item by ten thousand dollars and the dental insurance line item by three hundred and eleven dollars utilizing four thousand thirteen dollars from expected debt surplus of budgeted insurance benefit funds due to unanticipated changes. And the remaining six thousand two ninety-eight can be transferred from the Roden Bridge fund balance as part of the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer approved in Commissioners Court on May twenty-seventh, designated for equipment payoffs, purchases of other related expenditures. These budget adjustment details are as follows: six thousand two ninety-eight from the Roden Bridge fund balance, three thousand nine eighty-nine from health insurance, and twenty-four dollars from life insurance. Ten thousand dollars will go into salaries overtime, and three hundred and eleven dollars will go into dental insurance. Commissioner Kirkendall?
Sir, my.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to execute professional services agreements with Schaumburg and Polk Incorporated under the hazard mitigation grant program, D R four four eight five dash zero five one eight Boggy Creek drainage study and D R four four eight five dash zero five two four Mill Creek drainage study.
Sir.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number five, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cooper for the personing agent to solicit bids for Comma Creek Road Repair Project of approximately sixty-four square yards being twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot by six inches and approximately eighty-eight square yards being twenty-four foot by thirty-three foot by six inches on Carroll Plain in Lumberton, Texas, located in precinct one.
Sir.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, consider adoption of second amended resolution nine dash twenty-four authorizing submission of the fiscal year twenty-five project safe neighborhoods grant program funding application to the office of the governor criminal justice division as requested by Sheriff Davis.
Remove.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? This had to be amended because there were more funds available. The chief deputy, the captain, and Clay Woodward had been working on acquiring those funds, and so the resolution had to be amended to capture those increased funds. I think the original amount was around forty thousand, and now it's eighty-one nine thirty-five seventy. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, consider and possibly authorize an allocation of funding not to exceed twenty thousand dollars utilizing ARPA interest for the purpose of purchasing and installing cradles for mobile data terminals and seventeen sheriff's office vehicles. This purchase was previously approved, utilizing funds received from the opioid settlement fund, but has since been deemed an ineligible expense by the office of the attorney general. So we're looking to, going back to number six, Clay, Custer, the sheriff, and I know some others have been involved. Those computers are going to actually be purchased with the grant funding that's been increased on item number six here, but the cradles, there was not enough money for the docs. So we had identified the ARPA interest line item to pick those up, and there's plenty of funding there left to do that.
Sir.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And y'all should see, I think it's attached, the quote that the sheriff received for that of sixteen thousand five ninety-five oh six. We wanted to make sure we had enough in there in case they need another cradle or something changes. We allocated enough to cover that. Item number eight, discussion concerning the notice to proceed on the executed contract with N and T Construction for construction of the hurricane safe room as approved in Commissioners Court on June twenty-fourth. Commissioner Cooper had asked about this in our last regular meeting. June twenty-fourth, we issued the notice to proceed to N and T Construction. I think one or two days after that, the architect let us know that he was not able to keep his bid. That bid's from November the fifth, twenty twenty-four. Whenever the contractor reached out to his subs to tell them that he had the notes to proceed trying to get things rolling, they all let him know that the bids that they submitted were no longer any good, and so some of them did not. You can see there's several on here that say no change under the price increase column. But if you look at the electrical, I think the H V A C, there's a couple other line items as well that are quite a bit of an increase. Yeah, concrete was another one. Altogether, I think the increase is somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. I had an email printed, but I didn't. So Aaron and I met with the architect and the contractor yesterday, and Misty, of course, was there as well, and asked the contractor to go back to his subs and let him know that there is no additional funds available. Asked him to please honor their prices. He did say that, you know, some things, some pricing has gone up, and it was justified. But a lot of the, I guess, the unknowns or whatever you want to call it with all the tariffs going on, some people he felt like were taking advantage of that. He specifically mentioned square D, but he said there's others as well. I asked him for the use of some other electrical equipment besides square D. He was going to check with his subcontractors and get back with us. So we're expecting to hear from him by the end of the day Thursday, and then if there needs to be an action item, we'll put it on the agenda for next Tuesday. But as of right now, that's in limbo until we hear back from him, and I wanted to make sure everybody's updated. Does anybody have any questions regarding that? Aaron or Misty, did I miss anything?
No, but I'm okay, Judge. Just my opinion. You know, Monica Brothers sent out a notice two or three weeks ago that tariffs were going to increase tire prices on what we buy, on this world we live in. A lot of uncertainty, and I'd hate to see, you know, I'd like to see, because I won't be here next week, I'd like to see it be as close to the bid as possible, but I understand it. And.
Well, as soon as I get the information from the contractor, I'll share that with all of you, then I'll be glad you and I can have a discussion Friday or Monday, whenever you have time. We can talk about that before court.
Well, just in case I have to take action, I'm fine with it because we got the money, you know, fifteen years ago we didn't, but we got it, and like we built what we need. The need hasn't changed.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll move on to item number nine, discussion concerning House Bill fifteen twenty-two relating to notice of a meeting held under the open meetings law, which must be posted at least three business days before the scheduled date of meeting effective September first. So currently, until August third, first, notices for open meetings have to be posted seventy-two hours ahead of that meeting. We try to post them by noon on Friday for Tuesday morning meetings at ten A M. Going forward, after September first, those meeting notices must be posted by five P M on Wednesday before a Tuesday meeting. So it's posted all day Thursday, Friday, and Monday before that Tuesday meeting. So I know I sent this out to y'all last week. One thing I thought about is anytime there's a holiday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Monday, we're going to have to back that up a day. We could, if y'all wanted to, go ahead and back it up a day now and post it a week ahead of time, but if you don't want to do that, I certainly understand it's going to be hard to do even what the law is requiring now to get everything in that we need in time in order to post a meeting agenda. Just kind of wanted to bring this up, make sure everybody's aware, and just see what everybody's thoughts are. But regardless of what we decide, the law dictates that we have to have it posted by the end of the day Wednesday, or it would have to be posted at eight A M sharp on Thursday morning in order to meet the new law. So that's something we can talk about, or if y'all want to think about it and talk about it again in the future, we got a few weeks to decide, but that's coming up. And I think you probably saw it's also in there that once we start talking about anything regarding adopting a budget, the entire budget has to be attached to the agenda. About a month ago, Aaron and I were talking about replacing all these board boards out here instead of having paper to the cardboard, to the board, it will be electronic. So he and I talked about this the other day, and he said, just like our agendas are, if somebody's looking at an agenda on there and they want to look at the budget, they can click on a link and it'll pull it up and they'll be able to see it. So we can meet that no problem. Let's just more stuff to make sure we follow.
Would it help any at all when you talk, more specifically, when you're talking about having a holiday in one of those days, would it help any at all to move our meeting dates to Wednesday, or would that help anything? I've had a discussion with the new auditor in regards to, and also at some point in time with the treasurer, with the idea of having a holiday on payday weeks. It's confusion for them and causes. So whenever we go into the process of setting our meeting times and pay schedule and all that, we need to address that as well because it has become a problem for both of those departments.
Yeah.
So I guess I said all that, would it help us to have our meetings on Wednesday or not?
As far as posting the notices, it would not really change it either way, but if it helps with holidays coinciding with payroll. I know when we moved it from Monday to Tuesday, it was helpful. I don't know if it would be more helpful to go to Wednesdays, but that's always something we can visit.
We can address that when we usually do that in September.
September, yeah.
I just want to throw that out there.
Y'all have any input, Candace or David? Does moving it to Wednesday help with payroll?
The only thing it may help with is getting our, is going through the process and checking the payables and having that information ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Newspaper notices they have to be in on Tuesday, Monday, and so.
By noon Tuesday. Okay. Well, why don't we all think about that? Like the commissioner said, we have another month or so to decide. But if we want to start having them on Wednesdays, we just need to think about all the unforeseen things that may come up if we do that. But other than that, what do y'all think about posting the meeting notices? You want to put it on Wednesday or Tuesdays? If we do it on Wednesday, I think that gives everybody at least an extra day to get their stuff in. We just have to be more cognizant of when holidays are and then back it up to Tuesday if there's a holiday Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Monday. There's not a lot of holidays. Most holidays, I think, are kind of Mondays, aren't they? Debbie probably knows better than I do.
Just Christmas, Thanksgiving, any of the weeks.
We usually don't have a meeting after Thanksgiving because that's usually the fourth, third day, isn't it? So we have a meeting Tuesday before Thanksgiving, but every now and then it would probably fall that way, and Christmas, of course, will, once every so many years. Anyway.
Whatever's convenient, I'm all for. Whatever it needs is for everybody's.
Okay.
Yeah, they are the ones that have to deal with the agenda and everything, so.
Are you going to want, like, the information that we have to provide on Wednesday to, like, the payable information?
Whenever we post the agenda, that's also supposed to be on there, but we also understand if you don't have it ready, we can always update that link on there where they have it later. We've done that before.
Like, we usually, that's what I'm sitting here thinking. Usually, we run checks on Friday to be ready to pass out on Tuesday.
Right.
And it takes, you know, that's where we get all that information.
Yes, ma'am.
Claims list and all of that, so my brain's thinking that way. How are we going to, we have to have.
I think as long as the agenda's posted, even though we don't have the link on there for the backup, we would want everything else but the payroll and payables information. We could get that Friday and then just include that link on the agenda. Is that right, Laura?
We can. It's just, it, yeah, it's possible we can't do it.
Okay. All right.
Sometimes it's hard getting them there by Friday.
Yeah, that's the issue that we're going to have is because we're already present.
Yeah.
So this is a discussion only out.
Yes, sir.
Right here.
Yes, sir.
So the ones that it affects, the auditor yourself, Laura, the treasurer, why don't y'all get together and make a proposal to the court?
We'll do that.
Because I think it's left up to y'all, really, whatever's more convenient.
That's what we'll do. Sound good, everybody? All right, we'll move on to item number ten, which is our workshop. Conduct a workshop to discuss the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-six Hardin County budget, including anticipated revenue expenditure line items as necessary regarding any officer department and address requests made by any officer over a department head to increase expenditures or personnel or operations within a budget or personnel or operations. Following offices and departments have made requests that will be discussed, we're going to start with the District Attorney. Good afternoon. We'll start with your, you have this, your general fund budget. You've got some notes here at the bottom talking about two of your employees. You want to make sure they continue receiving the seven hundred and fifty dollars per month.
That's a pretrial diversion budget?
Yes, it is, I'm sorry. And then reducing the office supplies by five hundred, reduce minor equipment by one thousand, and then the office equipment rental's going to zero because the county attorney's taken off that, taken over that lease, and we did talk about that with him. He's included that in his budget. Anything else you want to talk about regarding the pretrial diversion?
No, sir.
Any questions regarding that from the court? All right, and the next one is the S B twenty-two expenses. Says that, do you have the, do you have what you gave sent to me? I'm trying not to say names, but if you want to say the names, you can, but you've got one position that needs to be reduced to zero because of the S B twenty-two requirements, correct?
Two positions. There were two positions that were given, given an additional sum of money that once we did the Senate Bill twenty-two audit or whatever, was not allowable, so we need to zero those two positions out.
Okay.
One of those individuals has actually moved to the back position, which will continue to receive the salary increase under Senate Bill twenty-two because of this law.
Okay. And then you have some money left that you want to be transferred to. Is that a part-time investigator, or is that what that's called?
Um, probably, because it's only eight hours a week, so that I think I've done at the bottom. I, Candace may be able to better answer this one for me after this is in her position of mine.
Well, I was just looking at this the other day and, and contacted H R because right now he's considered temporary because I think that the thing was he was going to end service. And I don't really remember all the details on what we were going to do, but so the line, we need to determine whether or not he then falls under part-time status rather than temporary status. So that, that's up in the air right now.
All right, but between you and Melinda and Mrs. Walton, y'all will get that figured out before we finalize the budget. Okay. And there's money there to take care of that, so.
And figuring that out, you're going to keep.
So the position will just change from a temporary to a part-time, but with that will also come add a benefit.
But we're not going to make any special accommodations just for Mr. Willipper. It's going to be what we do countywide for temporary, part-time, correct?
Right, she's just asking for him to have increased hours available. So right now he's temporary because she can only use him, like, for a certain amount of time based on what she has in the budget. So she's requesting for, if I'm understanding correctly, just more hours that she can utilize his services.
As it is now, I think, when I talked to Melinda last, unless I misunderstood, the difference between temporary and part-time is part-time has set hours, temporary does not. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
Someway.
Or set schedule.
Well, it's because we keep them on. We're not using them here and there. For example, if we use a temporary custodian, we're calling them in as needed. So it's really going to be a matter of getting with Ms. Walton and seeing exactly how she plans on utilizing him. But a part-time person, we would have to pay retirement for.
Which I don't have a problem with. I just, and I like it the way you explained it, because I have temporary on my budget. I don't need them all the time, so they don't have a set schedule, but yet part-time does, so.
Pretty much, yes, sir.
And just one thing I'd like to add. So this will actually be our third budget for the Senate Bill twenty-two that we're entering into. The first budget was only about five or six months long, and we did have some temporary, what we called temporary positions because we had monies that we could spend and we were going to be able to utilize that within that short period of time. When we entered into the second budget, Dale's position was already there. And because we had reduced amounts of money available to us because the money was going to be spent over twelve months instead of six months, I thought we disposed of all temporary positions, but again, I'm kind of like you. I maybe I don't understand how that categorization goes. But whatever we have now with Dale, however he is currently budgeted, I'm not asking that to change. It's just because we have the money from the two ladies that were not, was not allowable. I'd just like to take that money and spread it out and see how many hours more maybe a week I can get. But I, whatever he is called now is what I would expect that he would continue to be. It shouldn't change the dates of date. I really don't think that I'm going to have a whole lot many more hours to pay or to, but even two hours a week might be helpful.
You're saying he's still staying under a temporary status?
Whatever the status is, he is currently, is all I would ask that we do.
You just call him in as needed. Is that what you do?
Uh, basically, I get eight hours a week, and I let him choose how he needs it based upon the activities or the tasks that we have that week that's available for him.
On the V A C, is that just a regular V A C or a secret director now? I'm trying to figure out. What, what?
Each prosecutor has a V A C.
Okay, so it's not in the.
No, sir.
Each, I think one of our offices has to have one designated, and so.
That solves my beginning.
Yes, sir.
All right, so the only question is what the classification will be for Dale, and y'all, the three y'all will work that out and we'll make sure it's adjusted as necessary in the budget if it needs to be adjusted, correct? Anybody have any questions regarding that or anything else? Our last page, this is the page I thought was my first page, and that's your general fund budget. So I think you made one change regarding dues and subscriptions to pick up.
Dale's position. We have a T D C A A.
Right.
Participates with that, and we didn't have that in the budget for last year.
And then you added in the software for iCrime Fighter, and it's just like Mr. Minnick was talking about the other day. Y'all both went in and got a thousand cases each for the next year. If you don't use them all, it'll roll to the next year, and we'll worry about what that budget is next year once we see how it goes this year, correct?
Correct.
Is that a new expenditure? It's new, and then if you look at the next line item, they've been using their current records management software for eDiscovery, but this iCrime Fighter will become their eDiscovery, so there'll be a savings there. Did y'all get that amount yet?
I have not heard. I think Miss.
Max does.
It's forty-four, we're going to, it's forty-four hundred per office, so it'll save us that.
Right, I think you did tell us that the other day, so it won't be a full fifteen thousand.
And so iCrime Fighters is already, we're under contract with them already. We took care of that a couple months ago, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're just extending it and doing the for that and getting the credit on the E dot.
And then number four on there is the letter that was sent to us by you and the two district judges, and that's regarding the increase in the county supplement to, we'll start with yours, the district attorney. You're currently at thirteen thousand, is that right?
Correct.
And you're requesting an increase to eighteen thousand, and that has to do with the new law that increases the amount of the cap on the supplements?
It's an additional seven thousand per position, I believe, so that would be.
Twenty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Right. Well, I'm reading here, and I see eighteen thousand, but it wasn't what, no, no, no. I see the number eighteen thousand, but it's my mistake. That's where the increase is going from eighteen to twenty-five for the cap. So the request is for seven thousand for each position. Any comments regarding that request from the district attorney? So on the overall budget, what's the total increase we heard at the moment?
Twenty thousand, twenty-two? That's correct, yes, ma'am. No, 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 no. The actual increase would only be.
Be seven thousand for the supplement and then eleven thousand for the software, and then two hundred for the T D C A A dues and subscriptions. And is the S B twenty-two, does that pay in the supplement?
And actually, I wrote, that was a mistake on my part. I put S B twenty-two because I was thinking about the pretrial diversion. It's actually Senate Bill two ninety-three. Just covered that. No, sir, that would not. It would come from the county. Senate Bill twenty-two does come from Senate Bill twenty-two, so.
Any discussion regarding the increase for the supplement? So it's about probably eighty-four, probably double increase? No, because you have almost eleven for the software. Ten six. Eleven thousand, or eleven hundred. Yeah, ten six for the software, and then seven for the supplemental increase, and then two hundred for dues and subscriptions. Is that right?
Yes.
The letter that we got's from all three of you, so let's go ahead and address the two district judges as well. And let me just add too that in twenty sixteen, which is the first budget I prepared fiscal year sixteen, I received a request from Judge Thomas and Judge Stover. The maximum they could receive was eighteen thousand at that time, and it's still that way today. They were receiving thirteen at that time, if I remember, and they each asked for an increase of five. So they're getting five thousand for the juvenile board, to serve on the juvenile board, and the rest of that is a county supplement that we paid in as is being requested here to be increased. For the past ten years, or even longer, let's just say for the past ten years, they've received no increase in county supplement. They've also received no increase in their state pay. They're paid by the state and get a supplement from the county, and I think you told me yesterday, that's been since two thousand thirteen?
Two thousand thirteen, there's been no increase, no cost of living increase.
For the district judges. Now, I also did some digging, which I let you know about as well. The district judges, that amount goes to twenty-five thousand starting September first. That's the maximum amount they can receive from all local funds. Judge Stover works in Hardin County and Tyler County. They're currently paying him three thousand. I've tried to talk to Judge Powers, the county judge there, the past couple of days. He's out due to some illness, so I don't know if they're going to increase his any. But if it's the pledge of the court, what I would recommend that we do is increase Judge Thomas's to the twenty-five, and then I worked with Tyler County to find out if they're going to pay him any more, and if they are, we make up the difference so that he receives twenty-five total as well. So currently, they're paying him three thousand. If they're not going to give him any more, then I would look to increase ours to twenty-two so that he gets twenty-five thousand. If they're going to increase his to five or seven or whatever, we just pay whatever that difference is, but we would not reduce it any less than what he's making right now. And I would work with Judge Powers to make sure that that happens. If he does receive any more from local jurisdictions than he's allowed to get, the state ends up calling that money back, and, you know, in other words, the district judges and prosecutors can only make a total overall amount from their state funds and their county supplements. So if he goes over that, then the controller calls that back. Is that right?
That's correct, and they keep it in the state.
And I would not want that to happen. I wouldn't want to have to, for the state to have to get any money back. And so I think if we all work together, we can make sure that that's done fairly. I'm okay. All right, any other discussion regarding that? And I've worked with the auditor and we'll make sure that's included as well, and then everybody, all the adjustments that we're making, I'll make sure everybody has those before our next meeting on the twenty-second. And Commissioner, you'd asked me yesterday about possibly needing a special meeting the last week of the month, and most likely we will need to do that because we've got to set a proposed tax rate, so we'll talk about that here in a few minutes. Either probably Monday or Tuesday that week. Monday's better for me, but Tuesday may be better for y'all. Whatever we have to do, we'll make sure we set a meeting so that we can set that proposed tax rate, and we do need you here for that. Mrs. Walton, anything else you want to add?
Just thank y'all for the opportunity. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. We appreciate all that you and Judge Thomas are doing up there to move the criminal cases along. I know y'all got one going on today. I've been here a little over ten years. I've never seen juries going to go like they're going the past three or four years. Thank y'all for all you're doing to make that happen and get those documents. Yes, ma'am. All right, number ten V is the three fifty-six district judge, which we handled along with the district attorney. We also handled ten C under the eighty-eighth district judge. And number ten D. And number, uh, ten D is the agri-life extension agent, Ms. Pace? Good morning, afternoon rather?
I'm used to getting the morning one here.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, so you, uh, last year, we, you received a new position in your office for a twenty-five hour part-time position?
We did, and I appreciate that very much. It has been a great, you know.
And you had requested to increase her hours, and so what I asked Mrs. McKenna to do was work up a worksheet here, which we have, you have a copy of that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and, uh, to increase that to?
It would be an increase of four hours, so approximately four thousand dollars add to the total budget on that. Um, that, and when Candace so graciously did that, she did that with the cost of living raise already included in it. Um, if for some reason that does not happen, then it would be scaled back a little bit more as well.
So that would be three thousand nine sixty-five sixty with, uh, the se, the weights, the weight is thirty-two thirteen sixty, and the fringes are seven fifty-two?
Correct.
For a total of thirty-nine sixty-five sixty, and that's to increase her from twenty-five hours a week up to twenty-nine hours a week, correct?
Correct. That would give us the ability to have her work three full days if we needed her to, um, since we do nine-hour days. And there has been times, right now Tammy's in Conroe, I'm here, and we have her in the office. So we've had her there all day, and, you know, that'll eat your hours up real quick, whenever you gotta do a full day.
Yes, ma'am. Well, since Joe was here, y'all two have been the best since I've been on the court.
Thank you.
And so I'm proud, I'm proud of the work you do with agri-life. It's really refreshing. And I'll second that, I agree. Things have gone really well, y'all really improved all of your programs, and, uh, it shows, we're here all the time out in the public. Any discussion regarding this request? Alright, everybody's okay with it? Do you include that as well? Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll move to item ten, yep?
Yes, sir.
On the rock.
On the rock?
Yep. Down here on a request about, uh, the driveway.
Yes, sir.
Is that something we could definitely take care of?
Commissioner Young has already gotten with me on that, and so, uh, I'm gonna work on buying the rock, and she's gonna provide some material, I mean, some labor and equipment to places.
Okay.
They were putting rock down, and I came over here.
Okay. Great.
Very excited.
Good deal, thank you, appreciate that. Alright, uh, E is health services, this is Whitney, Ms. Whitney. I think, if I'm not mistaken, the only thing that we really need to talk about is the increase that you're asking to, uh, include in the indigent healthcare budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
So refresh my memory on this, I meant to call you this morning, I didn't, but we had three full-time people in that department before it became part of health services. You were able to move one or two people into, uh, receiving some, uh, grant funds so that, uh, they're doing some grant duties and some indigent healthcare duties?
Correct.
That grant is no longer able to support that anymore after what date?
Well, after-
Is it September thirtieth?
September thirtieth.
Okay.
September thirtieth.
And so now you're asking to put that person back being fully paid out of indigent healthcare, is that the, is that correct?
That's correct. At this time, the county is only paying for thirty-seven percent of that, uh, that position, and we were able to put sixty-three percent of that position in the, uh, health service grant. And that grant, the funds are, I don't know, is it reduced, uptaken, is taken away, it's taken away?
So what does that equate to, in dollars? I know that you factored rate of pay based on the grants. Would this be in line with other people? As clerks are making in the county, would they be around the same rate of pay?
Well, this would be a case where-
The reason I'm asking, that would be the limiper's, if, for some reason, you paid your staff higher because of the grant money? If you have a clerk in indigent health making a dollar, two dollars more an hour, clerks in the courthouse are gonna be furious. And so that's what I'm trying to decide, really to base my decision on, is she don't, whoever is really gonna be in line with whoever's in the courthouse.
Well, this is not a clerical position, this person would actually be seeing clients.
So is a nurse?
No, it's not a nurse.
So what's the difference between someone seeing someone in the, registering their car versus someone coming in to get help through indigent health? They, they have to process paperwork and collect data?
And they were, uh, collect information and see if they qualify to be on indigent healthcare. And they would have to make sure they have the right paperwork, so forth, the income, and, uh, make sure they're not eligible for other programs. So they're actually being qualified to see-
My secretary bets everything that comes through my office, so I'm just trying to see why they should be paid more. Because for us, when we, when we take action on this, it's, it's more difficult for us because we said yes than it is for you who asked. Well, let me just ask, did this, did this person's rate of pay change when they went to being paid partially by grant? Or is there, did their hourly rate stay the same at that time?
Well, what I did was, I did, I got a salary benchmark from all of the surrounding areas that had indigent healthcare, um, this exact position. And actually, we based it on the medium income, not the high, we did it on the medium. And that was done in, I wanna say twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two.
What, what is their favorite? Uh, yes, she's, yeah, she's gonna be making less than your secretary, I believe, is.
Well, not just my secretary, just-
I mean, I, I just looked that up because that was the- If she would've started at sixteen seventy-two an hour and had a three percent year-over-year increase, she's probably making about fifty-three sixty cents more than, like, at where she's at now, year-over-year for her number of years. I think she's been there four or five years, she's about fifty cents more than what, if she would've started at sixteen seventy-two. When I did the calculation on that, to see what the difference was between, because she has some longevity. I mean, you know, she's, I think she's been here, like I said, four or five years.
Do you want her anticipated rate with the three percent?
Yes, ma'am.
Would be at twenty sixteen?
Twenty dollars and sixteen cents an hour? And so what I'm looking at here on the indigent healthcare budget, under the, uh, salaries clerical, it would go up from fifteen one sixty-seven to forty thousand eight twelve, is that correct? And that's sixty-seven percent of, uh, that's the sixty-seven percent that the WIC grant is currently paying and have to go back to the county?
I think that is correct.
The, the whole amount that, that will be going to the county, now this is without fringes, and that's with her being a hundred percent paid by the county, would be, uh, forty-one thousand nine thirty-three. That's without fringes.
That's with the three percent rate?
That's with the three percent.
Forty-one nine thirty-three?
That's gross.
I think there's already, what, fifteen or sixteen in the budget?
Yeah, there's fifteen, six twenty-five, that's, that's already budgeted there.
I'm showing fifteen one sixty-seven for the adopted budget this year?
Oh, yeah, this year, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I'm looking at twenty-six, projected twenty-six.
So that'll go to forty-one nine thirty-three?
Yes, sir.
How many positions are we talking about, Sharon, right here?
Just one.
Just one? And this person, uh, is moving from one grant that is going away to a county payment, correct?
That's correct, she's moving from the grant, the grant, um, yes, sixty-three percent of their salary, they've moved it from where the grant's going away.
A percentage?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and how long has this person been employed with the county?
Four years, four.
Four?
Four years.
And at the time she hired in, under that grant, did she sign a document saying that the grant went away, she wouldn't have a job?
Yes.
Commissioner, let me remind you too, we used to have three full-time positions in this grant. They were able to move, uh, sixty-seven percent of one of those persons' pay over to WIC and cover it, do some WIC duties.
So save us some money.
But now that we, yes, you, now that WIC is not paying for that anymore, she's gotta go back to not doing WIC duties anymore and just doing indigent healthcare and, and covering it in this budget, so. I'm saying it has to, but that is what the, the, uh, the quest is here.
So-
So this is not a person that was hired under a grant, and now the grant's going away and the position goes away?
Okay, I'm glad you verified that, because I'd be the answer.
I know where you is headed, if I want to make sure you, you heard that part.
Thank you.
Uh, let me just add too, that, uh, Sharon has been meeting with, uh, some members of her staff to let them know that grant funds are going away, uh, I think some go away at the end of August and some go away at the end of September. And, uh, those personnel know that they're, need to start looking for other jobs, so she has been working on that. It's not been easy, but, uh, she's always known that might have to happen, and she's taking care of it. And I know Latasha's helped her with that as well, and so has my lady. So let me also add too, that, uh, you know, we have to, we have to, uh, we don't have to budget it, but we have to make sure that we have enough money to pay up to a certain amount for indigent healthcare. If that amount of expenditures comes in, we're still way under that amount. In fact, this is showing five sixteen, but it would be a little bit more once you change this number up here. Let's say five hundred and eighteen thousand, I know that, uh, budget five years ago was probably, uh, about a hundred thousand more than that. So we're still, uh, still looking pretty good.
That's mandated by the state at a percentage, right?
Yes, they percentage your GTRL, and I don't remember what that stands for, but it has to do with your, um, I know that Shirley used to always figure that for Miss Linda, and, uh, we would know what that amount was. And it's well over a million, it was well over a million five years ago, so it's, it'll be more than that now. Gross, taxable, something, I can't remember. So, now that we know all of the details about this, is there any issues with moving that person's full pay back to, uh, indigent healthcare where it used to be? And starting October first, that person will no longer have any WIC duties, or you'll still?
That's correct, no.
No WIC duties, because there's no WIC money?
That's correct.
Got it, okay, that means we gotta do job description changes again too, probably. Will it do it? Let's do it the last week of September? Or by the last week of September? Alright?
And, and you also put in here that there are a couple of line items that are typically over budgeted?
Yes, so I was able to, uh, move some money, because I'm not asking for an increase in the indigent healthcare budget. I'm just realityifying.
There was also a request, uh, to increase the, uh,
The health department.
Health department certifications, about two thousand dollars. And I looked at the income, uh, the revenue for them, it's like it's supported, so that shouldn't be any problem. You have, you'll, uh, then a pile of line items you wanna put that into?
Yes, I will.
Just let me know. Any other questions or comments regarding the health department request? Did I miss anything? Had it all covered? Alright, Candace, you agree I didn't miss anything?
Not to my knowledge, I think.
Alright, I know you're letting me know if you do. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alright, then we have, uh, human resources, have a memo here from the HR director. Uh, she's got some additional training requirements due to her new role as the ADA coordinator. She came to me the other day and, uh, told me she thought that, uh, she could get that done for around eight or nine hundred dollars. Uh, but to be safe, she asked me about increasing her budget by a thousand dollars, just to make sure that was covered. And of course, she'll only spend what she has to in order to, uh, complete that training. And I just said what you should've said, but we hadn't added that.
Sounds easy. What judge said?
I said you can add to it.
Um, I just, I recently learned of that, um, I had a meeting with TaxDOT yesterday for about two hours. Uh, there is some training that I'm going to be required to do for Title VI. Um, like I said, it was late yesterday, and whenever I had the meeting with Dale. But then also ADA, um, I'm pretty well versed in Title I of the ADA for, um, the employees, but Title II, um, is a requirement for, it's countywide. It has to do with buildings, uh, road signs, everything, under the sun. So I will just need some additional training. Road signs are included in Title II of the ADA that is required for TaxDOT, yes, sir. I don't make the rules.
We'll deal with that next, Linda's gonna tell y'all what kinda sign that was.
She said TaxDOT, I heard TaxDOT.
I did, TaxDOT makes it do it, it sounds like.
It is, it's all coming from TaxDOT.
Okay, so, uh, any issues with adding thousands of travel flight items for the, uh, HR director? Can you get that in? Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Y'all didn't have any hard questions for her?
You answer tomorrow.
Sharon says she wished I'd have done that for her too. Sharon, I pick on you when you come in here, because I get bombarded by about two or three elected officials and about six people who work in their offices. So I try to answer all those questions that I'm gonna get asked at the cafe, just for reference.
I understand.
Alright, item G, any other officer department, I do have one more to add. And I printed, uh, printed this out and put it in your, uh, packets. Under the sheriff jail operations, I had increased the sheriff's budget on the prisoner food line item by twenty thousand dollars, current budget is two thirty. Uh, it cost, uh, right at two hundred and fifty thousand last year. If you look at this year's year-to-date expenses, as of May, it was a hundred and sixty-two thousand. So it looks like he will go over two hundred and fifty thousand this year, of course, uh, he keeps that, uh, to a minimum. Prisoner food and prisoner medical are just two items that you really don't know, because you don't know what your population is gonna be. So I had increased that by twenty thousand, I forgot about it until I was going over everything this morning to prepare, I saw that. So I printed that, and I did let the sheriff know we'd be talking about it today. There's also a very slight increase under software licensing support from fifty-four ninety to fifty-six hundred. Chief Madden, anything you wanna add to that?
No, sir.
I didn't figure you did. Does anybody have any, uh, concerns regarding that, I mean, uh, just going off what we've been paying, that's, looks like that's about what it's gonna run, maybe even a little more than that, but we'll make sure it's covered if we can. Alright, with that said, are there any other offices or departments either that the commissioners wish to have discussed, or any department head or elected official here that wishes to discuss their proposed fiscal year twenty-six budget?
If, uh, I heard you mention Commissioner Kirk and Doll about another special meeting. Uh, how many, how many more workshops do you anticipate on, uh, budget?
Our next regular meeting next Tuesday, I had intended to lock all this down, and I think we can get really close to having it pretty well locked down. But we gotta set the proposed tax rate, and with Commissioner Kirk and Doll not being here, that's the reason I wanna make sure we had another special meeting. And, uh, anything we don't lock down on the twenty-second, which is next Tuesday, we will finalize it on whatever that date is, it is following Monday or Tuesday.
It looks like. This should be it as far as-
I think as far as any special requests, this should be it. I know, uh, Commissioner, uh, Cook had brought up the other day, and I think we talked about it briefly, we were not here, so you might not have heard it, but, uh, I know they're gonna recommend an increase to the, uh, dependent coverage, uh, pay that we've paid now for health insurance. So we wanna be sure we capture that.
I have, um, I have some rough numbers if you are interested in, in hearing that today.
We are, yes, ma'am. B ten G.
Oh, at least.
No, I'm talking about that. Oh, B ten G, that's right, yeah.
So, um, for general fund, to increase the entrance, uh, max, uh, based on the discussions the committee had, just for general fund, it's gonna cost an additional two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Three hundred and eighty-five dollars, that's just for, uh, general fund.
You said two fifty-two away per?
Three eighty-five. Um, and I'm saying that's rough, because I haven't gone back and checked to see if I made any errors in calculations, but.
Have you looked at Roden Bridge?
Roden Bridge, yes, sir.
And that's because of the seven percent increase from tax?
Well, that's with an increase plus, uh, what the committee was looking at, changing, um, the cost due to the increase, rather than passing down a hundred percent of that increase to the employee, I think they were looking at changing what the county was covering on, uh, health insurance, um, also dental, but I don't have those figures, the dental figures for any.
We already pay a hundred percent of the dental, don't we?
Yes, sir.
So, um, we currently pay five hundred dollars and some change for our dependent coverage now. We've had an increase for the past two years or three years, plus we're fixing to see this seven percent increase, so, uh, Melinda and Ernie had brought up the fact that they discussed bumping that up to six hundred and twenty-five.
I agree.
And she's been working on some numbers to- And she's been working on some numbers to present that to the committee, so that the committee can make the recommendation to court.
That's for all employees, that whole coverage, right? Uh for Roan Bridge, I have sixty-four thousand nine hundred twelve dollars. There might be an error there, because.
Okay then. I signed them back, I'm not gonna.
Oh, it is?
No, it's not. All right, so we'll have that, we'll talk about it in the next meeting and uh then we'll finalize it all. If y'all uh would Monday, the twenty-eighth at ten o'clock be good for y'all, or would Tuesday be better?
You said that's better for you?
Monday's better for me, but I can also be here Tuesday. Monday good for y'all?
Yes.
Okay, so Monday, twenty-eighth at ten o'clock, we'll have a special meeting?
Have um, has the um tax office given us any idea of, of tax rate?
They said that uh the uh, I'm sorry, the appraisal district has not sent us the certified numbers, they're due July twenty-fifth.
Okay.
But they plan to have them ready by the end of this week, if everything goes as planned, and once we have that, that'll go to Steve and Lisa and uh they usually take them a day or two to get everything figured into us. But uh that's, there's no way to have it ready next Tuesday, plus you're not here.
Yeah, and just for public, uh we have the uh North East Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association Annual Conference.
Not only the commissioners first and then county judge, did you?
Was it?
Nah.
Uh but anyway, I don't know why they put it on Fourth Tuesday, because everybody gets caught in the state of Texas. So anyway, I'll be there as an officer and I won't be here, so that's why I'm gonna be out.
I appreciate you, yes sir, representing Harden County there.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, Candace, that you can think about regarding the budget?
Y'all did a good job this year, that's what I was getting at while I was doing it, I was asking if we was gonna have any more uh workshops. Chris definitely remembered, I don't know about any of the other members, but man, we've been through some.
Yes.
Even before the judge got on the court. It don't go this smooth all the time, y'all, y'all been a good job, I appreciate it.
It's all Candace, thank you.
And cut move.
No, the judge does not.
All right, before we adjourn, one last call for anybody that might have anything to talk about regarding the budget. Had a motion by Commissioner Kirk and Doll, submitted by Commissioner Young to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.